Very mellow, he's got a very quiet personality and he loves being around you. If you'd like to foster or adopt magic, he is at our East Valley Animal Services Center.
Earlier this month, Dodger Stadium was commandeered for a very special awards ceremony. Councilmember Current Price, along with City Attorney Mike Fuhr and Fire Chief Ralph Tarazza, celebrated the bravery and courage of 18 Los Angeles City firefighters. Top honors went to one firefighter for his life-saving heroism while off duty. Check out this story about a small sample of our city's heroes.
I'm very pleased to be here tonight because we're recognizing the tremendous valor of our firefighters. It's extraordinary to be here on the field at Dodger Stadium. It's really a fitting place to be to celebrate those who have done so much for us.
We're giving one Medal of Valor, award medal, tonight. We're giving a couple Medal of Merits, a couple of special commendations. The Medal of Valor recipient was off-duty and he was on the freeway with his wife and he saw a young lady in a mental health crisis on a freeway overpass threatening to jump below to the freeway. He pulled over, climbed a fence and grabbed her by the arm and pulled her back. An extreme personal risk to himself. His name is Aaron King and I'm very proud of him and all the other recipients tonight.
There's no one more than me that appreciates the hard work that they do. You know, we, every time we have a major fire situation there, you know, we see the amazing work that they do.
I think it's important not only for their friends and family to be proud of them, but I want the public to see the acts of courage by the members of our department.
And so a chance to really single out those who have been just extraordinary is a real blessing for us as a community and a chance for us to recognize individuals and their families.
President Ronald Reagan designated November as National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in 1983. At the time, fewer than 2 million Americans had Alzheimer's. Today, that number has soared past 5 million. Dr. Iris Aguilar from the USC Royal Institute on Aging talked to Channel 35 about how the brain is affected by Alzheimer's, and she even throws in advice on diet, exercise, and ways to regulate the disease. Check this out.
Do you remember what we did yesterday?
Yesterday? I went fishing yesterday.
No, you...
Before I can actually speak about Alzheimer's, I should talk about dementia. Because Alzheimer's is the most common form of dementia. With Alzheimer's, what we see are changes in the brain, plaques and tangles, and so those are the hallmarks of Alzheimer's. We know that age is related to the disease. About 80% of people with Alzheimer's are over the age of 75. So it is more common in the older ages. But then there are other things that we are seeing that seem to be risk factors. High blood pressure, high cholesterol, diabetes, obesity, social isolation, having less education. From what we know now, it is not preventable. But there are things that we can do to help ward it off. Things that are good for the heart are also good for the brain. And so, you know, we want to make sure that we're controlling our high blood pressure, you know, that we're controlling our diabetes, our cholesterol, that we're physically active, that we're eating a healthy diet, and that we're staying socially engaged. Once we're diagnosed with Alzheimer's, I think the first thing that we want to do is continue going to the doctor. We also want to stay mentally active. So, you know, perhaps that is learning how to knit, or learning a new instrument, doing a puzzle. The point being is that you keep your mind active.
Mitchell Farrell is LA City's first council member of Native American descent. In honor of Native American Heritage Month, we sat down with him to discuss the importance of his family history and how relevant it is to his time in office.
I had no idea that me being of Native American heritage would loom so large at all in my time on the city council. I'm so grateful that it did, because somehow I came along at this time to be the voice for so many others who had never been heard or listened to. Representation is important, and I learned that. And another beautiful thing about this is it filled in a lot of the blanks I had in my own life. Having a strong sense of what local tribes went through during colonization here in Los Angeles, through the Spanish mission system, the complete erasure of so many of the California tribes, it was an imperative for me to eliminate Columbus Day and replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day on the city's administrative code. This isn't at anyone else's expense. That's sometimes the way people look at it, is as though it's divisive or anti-American or something. But I would argue very strongly that Native Americans are amongst the most patriotic of all Americans. We believe in the flag, we believe in pride in our country. Our government, our House of Representatives, was designed based on the Iroquois Confederacy. Our culture, our history is baked into the way our government was created. We need to take ownership of that, be proud of that, and lean in, not back away, not shut down. So, Native Americans suffer to this day in large part because of what their ancestors went through. And you can't ever correct history or make right the wrongs of the past, but you can acknowledge them and talk about them honestly and uplift individuals who are of Native American heritage. They need to be listened to, respected, understood, and through that, we can all benefit. And we can fill in some of the blanks in our own lives by understanding the history of the people who first occupied the land that we now enjoy and prosper from.
In 2016, Los Angeles voters passed Measure 8, a tax assessment bond to benefit the city's many parks. In our feature story this week, our own Maria Hall Brown sits down with Bill Jones of LA City's Rec. &amp; Parks to discuss the latest phase on Measure 8 projects.
I'm delighted to be joined by Bill Jones, the Chief Management Analyst for LA Rec. &amp; Parks. So what exactly was Measure 8?
Sure. So, you know, it's a very good question because, you know, we're always looking for funding to improve our parks. And before Measure 8, there was Proposition A, which was a bond measure. And that bond measure is basically the selling of bonds to get an amount of money that we can make investments on the front end. And they last for about 25 years. Well, Proposition A came to an end in 2019. And Measure 8 was put on the ballot in 2016, approved by the voters overwhelmingly, and it's a tax assessment. And the difference really between Measure 8 and Proposition A is that because Measure 8 is a tax assessment, it goes on into perpetuity. So it's continuous funding for our parks. It certainly is not going to be like Proposition A where we get a lot of money on the front end, but over time, we're going to get far more money and we're going to be able to sustain our parks.
Okay, so, a lot of these parks, you know, needed some attention. So what were some of the real critical issues you looked at to determine what needed to be upgraded?
So that's an excellent question, because many of our parks do need upgrades. Our general manager often says, you know, "If I could have all the money in the world, I'd take care of all of our problems." Unfortunately, we don't have that situation. So, you know, some of the things that we look at is certainly the age of the equipment and the facilities in our parks. We look at landscaping, perhaps things that have shifted, tree roots that uproot some of our pathways, or areas that have become bogged down and water-bogged, and so we have to get in and improve the drainage and things. And so, we're looking at a number of factors. We're also looking and listening to the communities to tell us what's wrong with our parks. You know, nobody knows better than the people in the community that use their parks day in and day out.
There are 18 parks that are a part of this?
So right now, we have 15 projects in progress right now.
Okay.
We're planning a new batch of projects, probably about five to seven projects that will be moving in the next few months. Really what we're looking at is somewhere between about 20 to 25 projects each year with the funding that comes in.
All right, so if people want to reach out, or find out, or all of that kind of stuff, what's the best website to go to?
laparks.org. If you go to laparks.org, or just do hashtag LA Parks on social media.
Thank you so much, Bill. It was great to see you again.
You're welcome.
The Granada Hills Parade Committee wants to invite residents of Council District 12 and beyond to the 2021 Granada Hills Holiday Parade. This year's theme, "A Charles Dickens Christmas," offers participants the chance to frolic in their favorite Victorian-era garb and celebrate Scrooge, Tiny Tim, and of course, the infamous ghosts of Christmas past, present, and future. Enjoy fabulous Christmas floats or feast on Figgy pudding. It will be a wonderful seasonal event put on by the valley's most neighborly town. The 38th Annual 2021 Granada Hills Holiday Parade is scheduled for Sunday, December 5, 2021, kicking off at 1:30 p.m., rain or shine. For more information, visit granadahillsholidayparade.org. The William Grant Still Arts Center invites you to begin your fall equinox by basking in joy from their latest online exhibition. "From Atlantis to Saturn: A Portal to Joy" dives deep underwater and penetrates the great beyond of outer space in search of joy. This exhibition is a collection of artist expressions that explore personal future happiness, which transports the viewer either literally or metaphorically. Contributing artists include Buena Johnson, Shel Barber, Cole Smith, Jesse Jumanji, and many more. Join the William Grant Still Arts Center as they venture into the depths of humanity, guiding your journey into the cosmos and beyond. The online exhibition, "From Atlantis to Saturn: A Portal to Joy," will be available to experience for free now through January 29. You can check out this online exhibition at wgsacpresents.com. Your pals at the Center for the Arts in Eagle Rock have a new music workshop for all ages. Flynn's Fabulous Music Lessons is a family-friendly class designed to be an introduction to rock, musical instruments, and more. Learn all about music, including how to make homemade instruments. Prepare to write your own songs to perform in the final session, an open-mic performance. Flynn's Fabulous Music Lessons begins Friday, December 3, at 6 p.m. via Zoom. To register or find more details, visit cfaer.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's it for this edition. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thank you so much for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and we're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA This Week.
City Council, today is Tuesday, November 30th. I'm Noori Martinez, the President to the City Council. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Blumenfield. Bonin. Buscaino. Absent. Sidiyo. Absent. De Leon. Absent. Harris Dawson. Corretts. Absent. For the record, Mr. Sidiyo is present. Krikorian.
Here.
Lee. Martinez.
Present.
O'Farrell.
Present.
Price.
Present.
Roman.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Eleven members present and accor, Madam President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of November 24, 2021.
Mr. O'Farrell moves, and Mr. Blumenfield seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval?
Mr. Harris Dawson moves, and Mr. Lee seconds, next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday, and it's time for the flag salute.
Mr. Lee, would you please see this in a pledge of allegiance, sir?
Absolutely, Madam President. Everybody face our country's flag, put your right hand over your heart, repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam President, would council like all items to go forth with today?
Yeah, without objection, that would be the order, next.
Madam President, there are requests to continue item number one to January 7, 2022, continue items 31, 38, 40, 41 to December 1st, 2021, and hold on the desk items 21, 22, 29, and 45.
Did you say the last one, 45?
Yes.
Okay, without objection. What's next?
Items 1 through 23 are items noticed for public hearing. Items 24 and 25 are items which public hearings have been held. Items 26 through 45 are items which public hearings have not been held. Items 46 through 49 are closed session items considered by Budget and Finance Committee. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, members, those items are now before us. Are there any specials? Mr. Bonin.
I believe you said 38, 40, and 41 have been continued until tomorrow?
Yes, at the request of Mr. Buscaino.
Great, then just item 39.
Item 39?
For a vote, yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Roman?
Thirty special for remarks.
Item 30 for Ms. Roman. Members, are there any other? Mr. Sidiyo?
Item 22, please.
Item 22, please.
Item 22 for comments or an amendment?
Simply to move the adoption of the PCN.
Is there a second?
Second, my Ms. Rodriguez. Okay, members, are there any other specials? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the following items. I apologize for that. I first want to go to the closed session items 24 and 25. Mr. Krikorian?
Madam President, items 46 through 49 have all been considered by Budget and Finance. Committee recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. These are routine settlements and can be taken up in open session unless members have questions or concerns.
Madam President, may I read the settlement amounts for the closed session items?
Yes, go ahead, seeing no other questions, go ahead.
Item 46, in the case entitled Judith Tolentino versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $125,000 in settlement. Item 47, in the case entitled California Automobile Insurance versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend up to $175,000 in settlement. Item 48, in the case entitled Talat Morad versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement. Finally, 49, in the case entitled Martin Rosas et al. versus Jose Flores Hernandez et al., there is a recommendation to expand up to $200,000 in settlement. And Madam President, that leaves items 46 through 49, as well as 24 and 25 available for council to vote on.
Okay, let's go ahead and prepare to vote on these items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
To our vice.
Okay, let's move on to public comment.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer a public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press *6 to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 160-535-8466, and then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once submitted into the meeting, press *9 to request to speak. When it is your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will ask you to press *6 to unmute.
To members of the public calling in, when it's your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak on. You have one minute per item to speak, up to three minutes total, and one minute for general public comment, if you wish. Please speak to the items before beginning general public comment. We'll tell you when your time's up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you're not on topic, or if we can't tell whether you're on topic, you'll get one brief warning from me or the President. At that point, you have to immediately get clearly on topic. If you don't, or you stray off-topic again, you'll be cut off and forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. The items that are open for public comment are items 2 to 23, and then 26 to 45, except for items 31, 38, 40, and 41. So, to repeat, it's 2 to 23, and then 26 to 31, 32 to 38, 39, and then 42 to 45, okay? For members of the public, as you were told, when it's your turn to speak, an automated Zoom voice will prompt you to press *6 to unmute yourself. If you don't do so, the council staff will prompt you to press *6. At that point, if you don't promptly press *6, you'll forfeit your speaking time, and we'll move on to the next speaker. Two things. We understand that you may be listening on another device, computer, channel 35, but keep one ear to the phone. There's a slight time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, and we want you to hear right away when it's your turn to press *6. Second, because of the time delay and feedback, it really causes a great deal of confusion if you have more than one device running. So as soon as it's your turn to speak, please turn down the volume on all the other devices. And with that, Madam President, we are ready to begin public comment.
Okay, let's go ahead and take the first speaker.
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hi, Jessica Rogers, President of the Pacific Palisades Residence Association. I'd like to make a general comment.
Absolutely, you have a minute, please.
Hello, City Council. I urge you to abstain or vote no on the Venice monster on the median that will be voted on tomorrow. Allowing for this project to go through sets a precedent that Angelenos cannot afford. We need housing, affordable housing, and thoughtful developments that enhance our neighborhoods and create thriving communities. We can no longer tolerate pay-to-play government where those who are greedy get to destroy the future of L.A. Review the documents. This proposed development has bypassed all standard reviews. It's located in a tsunami zone, and according to the recent L.A. County Environmental Study that just came out, it is, with all certainty, going to flood. A project that will cost about $1 million per unit to build is not responsible. We need you to make choices that best suit Angelenos and the future of our city. Forty thousand people have already spoken up and say they don't like Mike. Choices. B for Angelenos, demand more scrutiny, abstain and vote no. Thank you so much for your...
Yeah, I'd like to speak on...
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Item 27, item 39, and general public comment, please.
So you have two...
Okay, item 27, city staffer B. This is his 19th RV ban. He's done absolutely nothing to help the unhoused population in his district. In fact, he tried to claw back HHH funds for permanent supportive housing in his district. And this is what he does. He's like a glorified NIMBY neighborhood council member, just banning people living in RVs, the people hanging on by a thread. This is the only thing he does on the council, beside being second on, you know, Joey Buckets sadistic, deranged motions. I don't even know why this guy is on the council. He's like a flaccid, shriveled vestige of Joey Buckets. He's not even a real representative. It's pathetic. Item 39, more 41-18. Every single time you guys pass one of these things, it's an admission of your total failure to help unhoused people. John Lee, in his vote in favor of the 41-18 motion, originally claimed he had 60 beds in his district. He has provided zero proof that he had 60 shelter beds. He refuses to answer questions about it. When he was CPR eight about it, he couldn't provide a single document. He's a liar, and this is more sadistic shit from him. Just a despicable worm. City staffer B, criminal. I'll move on to general public comment. We have more City Hall corruption. One of Mike Fear, Fable, your boss, got into the action. One of his buddies in the DWP billing scandal just got indicted for fraud. Very cool. Glad to see that, you know, it's not just the City Council. We have all the city elected agencies getting into the corruption and indictment racket. Noori, MHD, you guys need to remove city staffer B from the Plum Committee. It's an embarrassment to the city. There's an indictment every four to six months for corruption, and John Lee is still sitting on the Plum Committee, which he was involved in when Englander got indicted, and he was taking bribes and backdating checks to cover up for Englander. Remove him from the committee. He's a disgrace to CD 12, a disgrace to the city. It's pathetic. Get him out of there immediately. I yield my time. Fuck you, John Lee.
Next speaker?
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hi, yes, this is Richie Sержenko from People's City Council. I'd like to speak on 27, 39, and general public comment, please. Hello?
Hi, so you weren't the previous speaker, right?
That was not me, Fable.
Okay, just checking, sorry. So you have two minutes for the first two items, followed by a minute for general?
Well, as a point of order, we've been doing this tango for over a year now, Fable. I figured you'd know my voice, especially educated lawyer like yourself, you know?
Apparently I didn't, so please begin.
It's okay. Hopefully, we can get on that level. Okay, so 27 is John Lee's RV ban. This is Lee's 19th RV ban. You know, I really wonder what the point of John Lee on this council is. Who are you serving, John? The business interests, it's the cops. But you're just sweeping unhoused people, people living in their van. You know, I love that your constituents are pulling up on you, burdocking you, and all of the opportunities that they have. And, you know, as the previous caller said, you're a little worm. You know, these videos of the West Valley folks making you squirm, they're great. And I hope they keep the pressure on, because we want to know where the beds are at, John. Keep saying, you know, there's 60 beds, well, where are they? Can you answer a question on camera? You know, maybe someone from the media can ask. But why are you afraid of the question, and why don't you have an answer? I want to echo what the last caller said about removing John Lee from the Plum Committee. You know, Mr. Lee, you got your constituents all riled up, and it's great to hear, you know, but it's sadistic shit. You know, 19 RV bans, that's absurd. And where are the beds, John? Moving on to general public comment, you know, Mike Fear and the city attorney, you know, caught up in another scandal. And this is just another sign of the corruption within the city. You know, you all, like, it's really dirty. It's pretty awful. And I hope all you corrupt elected keep getting caught up. You know, soon, we're going to turn the Getty House into a halfway house for all you corrupt elected officials. One final parting point for Paul Krikorian. You know, I see some budget and finance stuff on the agenda, and so it does look like that committee can move stuff. We've been waiting for nearly, oh, I mean, over a year, or, excuse me, almost a year, for the Bonin-Roman motion, you know, but it's stalking committee. You held it there despite everyone calling in, you know? So there is an opportunity to move things, but Paul, you know, again, you don't want to work with the people, you don't stand for the people. You and John Lee just out there doing whatever you want. I yield my time, and fuck you, John Lee.
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hi there, my name is Olga Lexel. I'd like to speak on item 21 and 39. First off, regarding item 21, I'm currently the Land Use Chair of the South Robertson Neighborhoods Council, as well as the Transportation Committee Vice Chair. I'm here to remind City Council that we actually wrote an extensive letter to council members Corretts and Ridley Thomas, because we cover both CD 5 and 10, about our support for the North Vale Gap closure. As a bike rider in the area myself, this would be life-changing for people using multimodal transit on the west side, and I urge you to support this. Next, regarding item 39, I'd like to speak as an individual. This is a really, really cruel way of enforcing encampments. RV vans don't do anything. I really, it's been shocking as somebody with experience working with unhoused populations to see people in City Council who have zero experience in social services or with working with these groups, who don't even come out to the parks, who don't even know what outreach looks like, advocating for these punitive measures that do nothing but displace people and disconnect people from their key workers. You should really be ashamed that this is even on the agenda. Personally, I think you are all aware that this... Um, personally, I think you are all aware that this violates Martin v. Boise and that the city is about to get slammed with multiple lawsuits for its forty-one eighteen enforcement. Um, I'm looking forward to that, and I just request that when it happens, you give the payout to the unhoused people you forcibly displaced. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn, and I'll speak on, uh, twenty-seven, I'll speak on the agenda as well as the general public comment. That's okay. Fable.
Yes, so you have three minutes for the items that are open, followed by a minute for general. Please begin.
Thank you, Speaker. It's items two to twenty-three, items twenty-six to thirty-one, items thirty-two to thirty-eight, item thirty-nine, and item forty-two to forty-five. Does that sound correct?
I think so. I, yes, go ahead, Mr. Previn.
Well, you see, that sort of points out, you know, nobody really knows what's going on when we do a crazy draconian system like this, but look, I'll be on point. I wanted to call out, uh, one of the speakers who I admire for admonishing, um, John Lee for his nineteenth, I believe it's his nineteenth, uh, oversized vehicle ban. But, you know, with all due respect, I, and I do love the Bonin, uh, who's being aggressively chased out of town by the angry Palisades mob and others, or they're trying, I don't think it will work, but, but there is no greater, uh, expansionist of parking restrictions that the city of Los Angeles has ever known greater than Mike Bonin during a period just prior to the pandemic. What's that?
I didn't say anything, Mr. Previn.
Okay, I don't want to, don't, no interrupting, Fable. I know you're trying, and we all are. It's very difficult with the pandemic and the Omicron variant and everything, which is, so I try to stay focused, and I hope that the sheriff is able to get in quickly to see a psychiatrist because he's concerned that the testing has been tampered with by the Chinese somehow, so I don't know. That sounds crazy to me, if you'll be, I'm just being honest. Now, the Miracle League, which I think is really sweet that the, the, CD ten has not been especially active at the moment because Mr. Ridley Thomas is indicted, but we're hoping for a speedy, speedy and perky trial in which he's exonerated fully on, uh, in mid-December if possible. Now, it's true that other corruption trials take longer, uh, if you see my City Watch article, you could read about Pat Leonard, the contracting fraud that would blow your mustache right off your face. So bad, unbelievable, that was 2015, he's going to be sentenced in 2022, so hang in there. But the Miracle League is not corrupt. This is helping out the, um, the folks who have special needs to play baseball, and Baldwin Hills Recreation Park, I believe it's a CD ten operation. I'd just like to know that the Dodgers are involved when they are on our agenda so that we can say thank you and good luck this year. We've had some upsetting lineup shifts that, uh, Scherzer is gone. We're, we're in a bad, it's not a great time for the Dodgers, but we're gonna, we're gonna dig deep. About, uh, forty-one eighteen, there's four, five letters that come to mind. Fame. It's a terrible, terrible, shameful choice to go around putting up post-its that cost between ten and fifteen thousand dollars, uh, in spots where, you know, we just are just worried that people are going to take an opportunity to sit down or lie down, or it's just not the way a culture handles, uh, the kind of blight and hardship that the population are experiencing. So I don't know. And then, when we have so many
You can go into general, Mr. Previn.
Yeah, I'll go into general, sure. We have so many clever, uh, council members trying to slice and dice all this money, and yet, at the end of every, uh, day, is an exasperated bureaucratic, uh, tangle. It's almost like trying to untie a knot, and when you make progress, it gets bigger on the other side. That's why we have the Gordian Group, which is a group, uh, in South Carolina that do, uh, knots, and they do job order contracting. This is task order contracting, where there's a price for everything in a book, we just point in that direction, and you hit the button, and then a median is put in at that spot at a fixed price. So doesn't that sound fantastic? That's what we're doing largely at the county, and the city, uh, Mr. Ridley Thomas, before he was indicted, came in and said, let's try it over here. And so I just wanted to breathe a little light, uh, life, shine a little light on that process, and see if we can, you know, construct it in such a way that is not riddled with fraud like over at the county, where they've become sleepy in their, uh, hibernation period.
Thank you, Mr. Previn.
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name is Jonathan Weiss. I'd like to speak on agenda item twenty-one.
Sure, you have a minute. Please begin.
Right, uh, as a resident of Palms and then Cheviot Hills since nineteen eighty-three, I strongly encourage you to follow the city attorney's recommendation and complete this long-delayed project. In nineteen thirty-eight, the developers of the Chevy, Knolls tract in the Chevy Hills area gave the city of Los Angeles a strip of land for a future street. Decades ago, most if not all of the neighboring homeowners bought pieces of that unbuilt future street as a buffer from the train land on the far side of it. Because of the sewer lines beneath the land, they were not allowed to build on it. Now the city needs to buy the land back for a different kind of street, a street for people who want to get around without having to drive. This is not unforeseeable. The homeowners will be compensated, and their original yards remain usable. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker.
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hi, my name's Christina Dirks. Um, I would like to speak on item thirty-nine and general public comment.
Sure, so you have a minute for each. Please begin.
Um, hi, I, uh, live in CD two. I volunteer with North Hollywood Home Alliance and, uh, do a lot of outreach with the unhoused. I'm just calling to specifically speak on item thirty-nine, uh, because, uh, implementing forty-one eighteen and not allowing people to sit or sleep or lie or have their property in public places, which, by the way, they are paying taxes for, so they have the access to those public places, um, doesn't actually help the issue. So if you would like to just be cruel to our citizens who are paying taxes, at least admit that. Um, just because you don't want to see these people doesn't mean that their problems, uh, are not happening and that the city has not failed in a huge way to actually help them. The only thing that actually helps are unhoused brothers and sisters and all the citizens in our city, and, by the way, if you actually do want them out of sight and you do want there to not be trash, then you need to actually implement, uh, trash cans. You need to allow public restrooms to be in these areas, uh, so that it's not ugly. Um, if you want to do that, you need to actually house them, not tiny homes, not project rooms, not sweeps. These sweeps actually lead to these people's belongings being lost, they lose their IDs, um, they actually are not able to, uh, have the community support if they have to move to a different part of town. Um, these items are very cruel, the ones that were put on the agenda for yesterday, they're about a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty zones. Um, if Joe Buscano would actually like to help, um, the people who are unhoused, I absolutely support him, but just moving them out of the way, just giving them tickets for existing when they don't have a place to go is not the way. And by the way, if they have a night shift, a lot of these people have jobs, shelter beds do not help because they actually have to, um, uh, come back by a certain time and leave by a certain time.
Thank you. Thank you, Speaker.
Caller with the phone number ending in two-two-four-zero, please press star six to unmute. Hello? Hello?
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Hi, uh, my name is Sabrina Johnson, and I'd like to speak on, uh, all items, please, and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items that I had listed out at the beginning, followed by a minute for general, so please begin.
Hey, first of all, item number twenty-seven, John Lee. I see, I see what you're doing here, we all see what you're doing here. You'd like to take a page out of Monica Rodriguez's book and, uh, and Nury Martinez and wait till there's some really egregious shit on the agenda, and then, you know, on that same day, you just sneak through one more little RV ban, because who's going to care about the little RV ban when you got four items on, uh, you know, banning hundreds of locations for sit, sleep, and lie? Nobody's going to care about the little RV van. We care about the RV ban. We see what you're doing. You're not fucking fooling anybody. You're a piece of shit. Okay, now, let's see, number, uh, what, thirty-nine, I guess that's the one that's left here out of all that other egregious garbage. Uh, no, no, absolutely the fuck not. Uh, we're not going to do this. You know that this is a violation of the spirit of Martin v. Boise. You know that. You know that it's a violation of the constitutional rights of unhoused people. We're not going to do it. And moving on to general public comment, since maybe I won't get through tomorrow to talk about all this garbage that Buscano has, numbers thirty-eight, forty, and forty-one, right? Um, I don't understand why, when we're talking about renter protections or anything that would help the poor, you all are worried about, oh, we, we could get sued, we could get sued by landlords, we could get sued by developers, but when it comes to violating the constitutional rights of unhoused people, you're not even, you're not even worried about it. You're not worried about getting sued by poor people, you're not even worried about the current lawsuits that you're embroiled in over these people's constitutional rights. You people are absolutely sickening. You are just nothing but bootlicking agents of the rich land-owning class, and I cannot wait, cannot wait for these upcoming elections where all of you are going to lose your fucking jobs.
Please state your name and the items you wish to speak on.
Twenty-one, thirty-nine, public comment.
Sure, so you have a minute for each. Please begin.
Uh, good morning. My name is Glenn Bailey, and the first item I wanted to speak on is item twenty-one. I am the Chair of the City's Bicycle Advisory Committee, and we have been discussing since probably the, uh, line even opened about the connection for the bikeway paralleling Expo Line, and this has been going on for many, many years, and this is a good solution, direct connection, and, uh, I just wanted to let the council know that the advisory committee has been engaged in the progress, uh, however slowly on this, and hope that this can move forward. With regards to item number thirty-nine, I now wear, change my hat to, uh, President of the North Ridge Neighborhood Council, uh, but I'm speaking as an individual. Uh, under that item, items five, six, and, five, six, and seven are located within the North Ridge Neighborhood Council boundaries, and item five is the North Ridge Park and Recreation Center. Um, item six is the, uh, Dearborn Park, which is a local neighborhood park, and item seven is Dearborn Charter Elementary School. All three of these facilities are directly abutted by single-family neighborhoods, um, across the street, or in the case of North Ridge Park, a townhome development on the east and west and the north, and then single-family on the north. So this, this is not just about parks and the school, this is also about the neighborhoods, interior residential neighborhoods, and there being adequate, um, parking for those who use the facilities. The Ridge Neighborhood Council had not, uh, aware of these motions, so we haven't agendized or taken action on them, but I do want, want to share with council that these three locations are areas of, um, tryst and, uh, impact to more than just the, the public facilities that were mentioned as far as residents of the area. Uh, with regards to general public comment, um, I think that neighborhood councils do a much better job of facilitating public comment because you have the option to not, not only call in, and first of all, calling in on a long-distance phone number for some is, um, you know, they either have restricted phone service or it's a financial burden. Neighborhood councils allow folks to join by Zoom, and City Council does not. So I really think that your public comment process needs to be improved to be more open and, um, welcoming of the public participation. I, I do say that also as, uh, as a personal comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak on.
My name is Stella Flatus-Hamilton. I'd like to speak on item twenty-nine, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-five, and then after, general public comment, please.
So, some of the items have been continued, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty-one.
Then all available items, all available items and general public comment.
Okay, so the available items, remember, two, they're two through twenty-three and twenty-six through forty-five, except for thirty-one, thirty-eight, forty, and forty-one. So you have three minutes for those items, followed by a minute for general.
Is twenty-nine available?
Uh, yes, it is.
Okay, so thirty-eight, thirty-nine, and thirty-eight are not available?
Thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one aren't available, but you can talk about it in general if you wish. So we'll set the clock for three minutes, and when you hit the items that aren't available, you can talk about it in general, and we'll, let, let us know if you want to do that, okay?
Uh, what I'll do here, what I'll do is I'll talk about twenty-nine, forty-five, then general. How about that?
Sounds great.
Thank you. I, I think the process is really unfair. So for twenty-nine, firearms, the only thing I want to say about this is, in the part that you have written and available for the public to view, there's like a little, little part that says, subject to certain exceptions. I don't, I didn't go into all the files. I wish those certain exceptions would be put there, and I want to echo what the lady said earlier about the egregious agenda items. I think it's interesting, you have such a stacked situation, right? We just had a little dialogue about what's available, um, which I don't think you, I don't think you're correct, honestly, um, but whatever, we'll go with it. So, subject to certain exceptions, that needs to be put, what are, what are, what are the exceptions? So for item forty-five, we have the COVID-nineteen malls report from the attorney, the city attorney report. I just want to say, I think that it's very interesting that the malls, you guys had meetings with like stakeholders in the malls or whoever is running the, the bosses of the malls, you had these meetings with them, and then suddenly malls are not covered locations anymore. Honestly, we know this is not about health. Nury Martinez was pushing stigma, saying that we're a danger to children. Um, you, you guys have been pushing stigma this entire time, and as I say, this is eugenics era issues, okay? We have the antisocial laws done by the Nazis, anti-Jew laws in Nuremberg, okay? And this is the forty-one, forty, forty, thirty-nine, thirty-eight, all those that are on the agenda, which I believe they should be open for public comment. I think that those items are antisocial laws, like in Nuremberg, they're Nazi-era laws, eugenics-era laws. So then we have item forty-five, which is pushing more stigma, but then you release the malls from, you know, whatever issues because it is unconstitutional and you know it is. And I want to go to my general public comment. For my general public comment, I would like to say that my friend is paralyzed. She went wedding dress shopping, and before she went wedding dress shopping, she went to go get her jab. The same day, she lost full motor control and she is paralyzed. She cannot talk, she's on morphine. She is blind with her husband, who's also blind. So when I say this is eugenics era, if y'all are okay after your jabs, y'all got saline, and everybody else is getting the KO jab. This is eugenics-era genocide. Nobody wants to talk about item, those, those items. Nobody, you guys want to stack this shit in your agendas. It's unconstitutional, the anti-homeless laws are unconstitutional, the COVID bullshit is unconstitutional. We are basically sitting, you guys are sitting in a room, you have no power, you have no authority anymore, you have given it away because you have become dictators. have given it away because you've become dictators. Shame, shame, shame. We, the people, demand a redress of the vaccine-proof ordinance. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Speaker, and I believe that's the last speaker.
Okay, that would be the last speaker for public comment for today's agenda. Let's go ahead and vote on the following items. Let's go ahead and vote on items twenty through twen-, I'm sorry, two through twenty, twenty-three, twenty-six through twenty-eight, thirty-two through thirty-seven, and forty-two through forty-four. Madam Clerk, open the roll.
Madam President.
Yes?
Prior to the vote, uh, I need to make an announcement. The public hearing is now closed for items thirteen through twenty. The tabulation of ballots shall take place in space three hundred of five-five-five Ramirez Street on Wednesday, December first, at ten a.m. To access the live stream, join Zoom meeting ID nine-five-three-eight-six-two-eight four-three-nine-three and use the passcode PROP218. Public announcement of the tabulation of ballots and consideration of the final ordinance will take place in city council on Tuesday, January eighteen, twenty-twenty-two. Thank you, Madam President.
Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item forty-five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Forty-five, sir. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Let's move on to item thirty-nine. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Hold on for just a second. Mr. Bonin?
The button's not working.
Mr. Bon's button's not working. Do you want to record your verbal no on that, sir? No vote for Mr. Bonin on item thirty-nine, as well as Ms. Rahmon.
Maybe that will make it eleven ayes, two noes.
Thank you. Let's move on to item twenty-two. Let's go ahead and vote on item twenty-two as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Okay, let's move on to item twenty-one. This was called special by Mr. Corretz for comments. Mr. City Attorney, there are folks that need to be led into this meeting.
Yes.
It's regarding, um...
So there is a representative, uh, for the property owners in this eminent domain action. So if I could ask the staff, um, to pull the relevant person out of the queue who's, uh, Gary...
If I tell you, can give me the thumbs up when that's ready to go?
The person's name is, if I'm pronouncing it correctly, Gary Kovakic. And when he gets on the line, he can tell me if I've, if I've mispronounced his name, if I have my apologies. So if you'd give us just a minute to find the interested party.
Gary Kovakian, can you hear us? Let's just give him a couple of more seconds.
I think you were about to get him.
Uh, yes, this is Gary Kovakic.
Uh, sorry, could you pronounce your name again? I think I did butcher it. I'm sorry.
Uh, everybody does. It's Kovakic.
Ah, all right. Thank you very much. So this is on item twenty-one. Uh, we understand that you represent the property owners. So we're going to give you five minutes on the clock, and, um, you can make any arguments that you want, say what you wish, relevant to the item. Uh, the only thing we ask is that you not become overly repetitive. So the floor is yours, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. I will try to comply with your instructions. Uh, my name is Gary Kovakic. I'm eminent domain, excuse me, eminent domain counsel. We're five of the property owners that are going to be affected by this taking. The, their names are Ainsley, Greenwood, Henry, Samuels, and Simon. Their full names and addresses, APNs, and right-of-way numbers are set forth in our letter to the city council, which I request be made part of the record. We are well aware of the specific topics that can be addressed at a resolution of necessity hearing, so I won't talk about the amount of just compensation, although the severance damages for the takings will be substantial. In our letter of opposition, we requested a continuance of this hearing to get more details about the project's dimensions and components. The city originally scheduled a meeting with the property owners for September thirtieth, then abruptly canceled it and decided to go directly to the eminent domain process. We again request a continuance of this hearing and a meeting with city engineers. Absent a continuance, we submit that the project is not planned or located in the manner that is most compatible with the greatest public good and least private injury. It should be narrower. It should be further away from our clients' homes, and it should have a sound wall. Uh, please be aware that the city signed a settlement agreement and release with three of our clients, Samuels, Greenwood, and Simon, in two thousand and twelve. That agreement specifically provides that the easement will be thirteen feet wide. According to the hearing materials, it appears that the easement is now between sixteen and fifty-four feet wide. It also specifically provides that a sound wall will be constructed by the city that meets Caltrans' design standards, and there is no apparent sound wall in the materials presented to the council. And it also contains detailed restrictions about lighting, community outreach, including meetings with the LAPD and engineers, and signage. Those are not apparent from this hearing materials.
What happened?
So the takings are not necessary based on the thirteen-foot restriction. And again, we request the continuance of this hearing to obtain more information about the project to ensure that it complies with the city's previous agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and, um, I just want to make sure, because you do have more time if you want it. That's all you, you want to say? You are completed?
Uh, as far as I can tell, I'm completed. I will yield my time, uh, unless something comes up during the course of the hearing that requires me to address it.
All right, that, oh, I should say that we probably won't give you another time to talk, so, so this is it?
Okay.
All right. So thank you.
That's, that's, that's my, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, and I believe, um, Mr. Corretz.
Mr. City Attorney, um, before, before I ask Mr. Corretz to speak, I believe there's, uh, DOT is, is on the line or in our meeting. See if we can go to the department as well. I'm not sure if there's a representative there.
Yes, that is correct. Uh, my name is Carlos Rios, representing LA DOT.
Hello, sir.
Good morning. Um, as part of my, uh, presentation, I had provided the city clerk a, a quick PowerPoint presentation, and I can ask IT, there you go. I appreciate that.
Can I ask you to search your camera, please, so that we can see that you're in our meeting? Oh, there you are. Can you hear me?
Can you, can you see me now?
Well, now your PowerPoint presentation's on the screen, so why don't you go, go ahead and begin?
Okay, thank you very much. Um, again, good morning, um, council members. My name is Carlos Rios, and I am a principal transportation engineer with LA DOT overseeing the active transportation program. Uh, with me, I also have Janelle Para and Zakiya Khatir to answer any questions that, um, any council members may have. Uh, can you click to the next, um, slide, please? Okay, um, basically, what you see here on this map is, um, the project in question. The blue line essentially denotes the, um, the bicycle facility that we have implemented starting on the west side from the Santa Monica Pier. Um, and at the moment, it terminates at the, uh, Overland and Exposition Crossing, and then it picks up again, uh, just approximately a mile east at the, uh, Overland, uh, Agri Crossing, and then it continues all the way to the USC Expo Park area. Uh, the circled area is essentially the project in question that we are attempting to implement. Once we implement, uh, this less-than-a-mile segment of the bicycle facility, we will have a continuous fourteen-mile facility that will, uh, allow cyclists to be, essentially commute from the Santa Monica Pier all the way to the USC Expo Park area. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this particular visual just denotes, uh, more, uh, explicitly where the right-of-way take, um, is being requested. The area in the circle denotes the, uh, the properties that, uh, this particular request is making. Uh, and again, the idea is that we have already, we, we need thirteen, uh, restricted-use easements in order to implement our project. We have already secured easements for five of the properties, and this recommendation is to secure the additional eight easements that are required. Um, next slide, please. Again, what you see before you is kind of a visual of the easements that we have in question here. The area that's denoted by the orange dash is essentially the residential usage area, um, and the section in blue and orange shaded is the, um, restricted-use easements that is really not habitual, not usable by the property. And what we are proposing to take is the area in, denoted in orange. Uh, the bicycle facility is denoted in red. Uh, so as you can see, we are proposing to, to acquire the, uh, the area that is restricted-use easement in order to complete our facility. Uh, next slide, please. Um, yeah, and so that kind of concludes our presentation. Again, as I mentioned before, we have Janelle Para and Zakiya Khatir here to address any questions that the, uh, council members may have. Again, so I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Mr. Corretz, to speak on this issue, sir, you call this item special?
Thank you, Madam President and colleagues. My staff and I have been working on this project since I first got started on the council twelve years ago and are close to making this long-sought project a reality. I want to thank DOT, Bureau of Engineering, and others who have worked so hard to get us to this point. This project will be a wonderful amenity for my constituents in Cheviot Hills, Palms, and other nearby neighborhoods in CD5. But more importantly, as described by staff, this will close a critical gap in the around-fourteen-mile east-west cycling network. It will connect downtown LA with Santa Monica and all the destinations in between. All current options to make this connection have grades that are much, much too steep for almost all cyclists, or would take cyclists past the busy ten freeway, on-and-off ramps at Overland Avenue and National Boulevard. We, we have to move this forward to close this gap. This gap just happens to be in my district, but it could be anywhere, and it's preventing this incredible bicycle network from being functional. I do understand these residents don't like the idea of giving up this portion of their properties. However, this acquisition is not being done to create another route for the nearby Expo Light Rail Line or to widen the adjacent, uh, ten freeway. It's being created for cyclists of all abilities and for pedestrians. The properties being acquired are part of a restricted-use utility easement where the property owners were not allowed to build permanent structures. These residents will not be losing their original front yards or backyards or access to their garages. Our BOE real estate staff have done their due diligence in communicating and making offers to these property owners, and it's now time, finally, after twelve years, to move this project forward. I ask for your support, and an eye vote. Thank you.
See no other member on the queue? Let's go ahead and vote on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. Thank you very much to the DOT staff for being on our meeting. Thank you very much. Have a good day. Let's move on to item twenty-nine. This was called special by Mr. Corretz.
Thank you again, Madam President, and thank you, members, for your continued attention to this item. We've had many tragedies from the 2013 Santa Monica City College mass shooting to the present. The common thread running through these tragedies is that they were carried out using ghost guns. The criminal underground has long relied on stolen weapons with filed-off serial numbers, but ghost guns represent a digital age upgrade, and they are especially prevalent in states with strict firearm laws. According to local and federal law enforcement officials in LA, Oakland, San Diego, and San Francisco, over the past eighteen months, ghost guns accounted for between twenty-five and fifty percent of firearms recovered at crime scenes. The vast majority of suspects caught with them were legally prohibited from having guns. Last year, the ATF LA Field Division said that forty-one percent of their cases were turning up ghost guns. And earlier this year, during an announcement of a new federal strike force focused on disrupting the illegal flow of weapons into LA and the sale of ghost guns locally, Chief Morris said that these guns now account for a third of all weapons recovered by the department. The ghost gun kits cost between four and five hundred dollars, come in cardboard boxes containing steel barrels, plastic frames, and a number of small plastic and metal parts. These guns and the industry that produces them have flourished because of a loophole in federal regulations. The parts used to build privately-made firearms are classified as components, not actual guns, which means that online buyers are not required to undergo, undergo background checks or register the weapons. That makes them a powerful magnet for those banned from gun ownership, including convicted felons, domestic abusers subject to orders of protection, the mentally ill, and children. There are no federal restrictions on who can buy ghost gun kits, how many kits or parts someone could purchase, and they're intentionally marketed as unrelated, unregulated, and untraceable to appeal to people prohibited from purchasing firearms legally. It's absolutely ridiculous to think that the manufacture, sale, and marketing of these weapons is intended for anything other than skirting loopholes in state and federal gun laws in order to get firearms into the hands of people who law enforcement and we as a society have deemed unfit to have those guns. These guns should have no place in Los Angeles and have already wrecked havoc on our streets. LAPD has seen a four-hundred percent increase in ghost gun recovery since 2017, and current trends show these figures will continue to grow exponentially. We've seen a more than thirty-five percent increase in homicides in the first half of this year compared to 2019, and ghost guns have been involved in twenty-four of those murders, eight attempted murders, sixty assaults with deadly weapons, and twenty armed robberies. There's no question that ghost guns are an epidemic nationwide, but today we have an obligation to protect the lives of Angelenos, and this is one step that we can take to do all that. But it's just the start, and there's much more work to be done. With that said, I'd first like to thank my colleague, Paul Krikorian, who has partnered with me on legislation to stem gun violence many times over the years. Um, and his unwavering partnership and commitment to gun violence prevention is a big reason we're crossing this finish line today. I'd also like to extend big thank yous to LAPD, which has been in the forefront of responding to this new challenge for years, to the Police Commission for its report, which attached numbers to the tragic prevalence of ghost guns in LA, to City Attorney Mike Fewer, who drafted the ordinance, to Senators Feinstein and Padilla for their support of this ordinance and continued leadership on gun violence prevention, and to the Brady Center, the Los Angeles chapter of the Brady Campaign, Women Against Gun Violence, and every town, all for their leadership advocacy and consistent efforts to move the needle locally and nationally in the direction of common sense gun laws. Far too often, gun violence is a secondary consideration with fleeting attention until someone has been directly impacted. And this isn't good enough. This is a problem that has reached epidemic proportions in the US, and these organizations have been on the front lines of this fight for decades, and we thank them. And with that said, colleagues, I ask for your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Corretz. Mr. De Leon?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Uh, colleagues, let me ask a very simple question. Can you build a house in Los Angeles without a permit? Better still, can you move a gas line in your house without a permit, or perhaps fix a sidewalk? And we all know what the answer is, because the answer is simply a no. In fact, in the state of California, if you want to buy tobacco, liquor, or beer, or even a can of spray paint at Home Depot or Lowe's or your local hardware store, you have to issue out, or you have to show a license, identification. The reason is that we have, the reason why we have regulations is to protect the public. So how is it that you can assemble a gun... So, how is it that you can assemble a gun with untraceable pieces? Because the basic premise of a ghost gun is that it's untraceable. You can use one in a crime without the fear of it being traced back to you because there's no serial number. It's homemade, in your backyard or in your garage. And since we have an assault weapons ban here in California, you can also make your own assault weapons at home to avoid the ban against military-style weapons. All you need is a 3D printer. For criminals, ghost guns are the weapon of choice today. No background checks, no traceability, no accountability. The only group defending these weapons of mass casualties is the National Rifle Association, the NRA. Right now, we're facing a spike in violent crime here in Los Angeles and across the country. Los Angeles in particular is experiencing an epidemic in the proliferation of ghost guns, where seizures are up over 400% compared to 2017. And ghost guns are responsible for more than 100 deaths this year alone, and those numbers are escalating year after year. Shootings are up over 20% from last year and nearly 50% from 2019. Felons who are prohibited from possessing a firearm because of previous crimes are now turning to ghost guns and putting, as we know, the public, our constituents, Angelenos, at risk. It's long overdue that the city takes action to end this dangerous public safety threat, and quite frankly, this is a public health threat, because I know this fight very, very well. More than eight years ago, I actually introduced the first legislation on this issue in the state of California when I was the leader of the California State Senate, or I should say when I was the senator, to address the threats that ghost guns possessed. When I was the president of the California State Senate, I led the fight to ban the sale of semi-automatic rifles with detachable ammunition magazines and required ID checks for ammunition purchasers. Like those bills, this ordinance today is a sensible response to the growing dangers that ghost guns present. We must act decisively to control this problem before we lose countless more lives to preventable violence on our streets. I want to thank very much the leadership of Mr. Corretts as well as Mr. Krikorian. You have been stalwarts on the issue of gun violence, high-powered assault weapons, as well as ammunition, and in this case today, moving forward this common sense ordinance, this motion today as it relates to ghost guns. With that, thank you very much, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeon. Mr. Krikorian?
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Corretts, for your partnership and your leadership in this. Members, this is not some niche problem. If there's one thing that's been demonstrated without controversy and without the ability to successfully challenge over the last few years, it is that background checks work. One of the most successful strategies this nation has adopted to reduce gun violence is background checks. Background checks that keep firearms out of the hands of the dangerously mentally ill, that keep firearms out of the hands of violent felons, that keep firearms out of the hands of those who've committed domestic violence. Background checks work. And yet, we now have an entire industry of manufacturers whose, the sole purpose of which is to evade background checks, to manufacture a product that will lead to death, destruction, violence across our country with impunity because those weapons are available without background checks and without the ability to be traced after a crime is committed. That's what ghost guns are. Now, in the report that the council has received back, among the many sobering statistics that Mr. Corretts just alluded to, there's also another part of that report that reads as follows. "Industrial machines located in Mexico are carving out AR-15 rifle lower receivers in large quantities. The lower receiver is the most important part of the rifle, and additional parts to complete the rifle can be easily obtained online." So, there are literally factories in Mexico right now churning out assault weapons without serial numbers to be brought into California that can be ordered online. They're not completed, so all of our laws don't apply to prohibit them. So, to have corporate interests in Nevada, or in Mexico, or elsewhere in this country enriching themselves, profiting off of the sale of items that in any other circumstance would be prohibited in the state of California but for the fact that they have a part that doesn't have a serial number on it, is just outrageous. And so, this ordinance that's before you is an important step forward in regaining control and holding accountable those who, whose sole purpose is to avoid laws that work to reduce violence and keep people safe. So, I ask for your "I-vote."
Mr. DeLeon?
Thank you very much. Just very quickly, again, I just wanted to point out, too, that we have a lot of manufacturing sites on this side of the border that are exporting, if you will, the receivers to Mexico as well, too. Obviously, the vast majority of high-part assault weapons, Quercus Archivo, AR-15s, et cetera, et cetera, are coming from the U.S. side, as well as ammunition that are being exported to Mexico as well as Central America. So, when we read the papers of all the grisly massacres and deaths taking place in Mexico because of the voracious appetite that we have to consume illicit drugs on our side of the border, we're exporting the actually death weapons from this side of the border, especially from our neighboring right-to-work states, be Nevada, Arizona, and a few states over the state of Texas, where it's easy to buy high-part assault weapons like, you know, a dozen eggs, a loaf of bread, or, you know, a gallon of milk, especially when we have the, as Mr. Krikorian, Mr. Corretts, and as well as other colleagues here know all too well, especially when there's gun shows in Reno, Nevada, in Las Vegas, Nevada, in Phoenix, Arizona, where the I-10, the I-15, the I-80 corridor are full of high-part assault weapons that have been purchased without any ID background checks in those respective states at those specific gun shows. And obviously, they come down the I-80 corridor into Sacramento, into the Bay Area, I-5, into the Central Valley, I-15 from Vegas into LA, I-10 coming through Imperial, as well as Riverside, San Bernardino, and LA County, then making down the 805 corridor, the 15, as well as the 5, going into Tijuana, Mexicali, as well as Tecate, where they sell the weapons to the drug cartels. Just want to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. DeLeon. Seeing no other members on the queue, let's go ahead and open the roll on item 29. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 "I's."
Let's move on to item number 30, called special by Ms. Rahmon.
Thank you so much for letting me speak on this item. LA decriminalized sidewalk vending in 2017, and we started our permitting system in 2018, but to date, only 165 of LA's estimated 10,000 food vendors have been permitted. To me, that's a sign that we have a broken process in place, and a big part of the process that is broken is actually not in our control. These are county health regulations that are determined by the state retail food code. This is a code that was not created with street vendors in mind. Let me share one example of a particularly crazy rule. In a city which has fresh sliced fruit sold on every corner, the code actually prohibits slicing fruit on-site, meaning that vendors can basically never become legalized under this code. But changes to this code won't become a priority for our state reps unless we, who represent Los Angeles, a city of vendors, ask for it to become a priority. That's why this resolution, I feel, is so important. Thank you so much, Councilmember Price, for your partnership and leadership on this, and I hope all of you will support it today. Thank you.
Mr. DeLeon?
President, I want to recognize both Ms. Rahmon and Mr. Price for your leadership on this file item number 30. Our street vendors, ambulantes, are so part of the cultural fabric of who we are as a great city. You know, over 50%, or I should say, slightly under 50% of the city are Latinos, and so many hard-working families, especially single mothers, are out there from, you know, dusk to dawn, doing everything they can to pay the rent, put food on the table, and they're out there selling their delicious food. Who here hasn't enjoyed, you know, these street vendors? It's important that, obviously, regulations are put in place, but to facilitate the process and not sort of have the guise that we have regulated them, but we've made it such a bureaucratic morass, we actually make it much more difficult for them to actually attain to be legit, if you will, within the eyes or through the prism of the county Public Health Department of Los Angeles. So, I just want to thank you very much, and I know that tens of thousands of street vendors who are trying to do the right thing, thank both of you as well.
Seeing no other members on the queue, let's go ahead and vote on this item. Open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 "I's."
Madam Clerk, what's before us now?
Counsel has motions for posting a referral. Motions will be posted on the city clerk's website shortly after the meeting for the public's viewing. To subscribe to receive copies of today's council motions to your email, please visit clerk.lacity.org.
Okay, those are posted and referred. Members, are there any announcements? Seeing no announcements, can we all rise for adjourned motions? Any adjourned motions on my right? Mr. Bonin?
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, today I rise to adjourn in memory of a great community leader, Dr. Jack Fujimoto. He was a trailblazer who literally put Sawtell Japan Town on the map and who devoted his life to education and the preservation of Japanese-American culture and heritage. Masakazu Jack Fujimoto was born in 1928 and raised in Encinitas, California. He was the eldest of six children, and at the age of 13 in 1942, he, his family, his four siblings were forced to relocate to Poston, Arizona's internment camp. They stayed there for over three years, and when they were released, they resettled back at Encinitas, where his parents established a successful carnation farm. He graduated high school there, and then he enlisted in the U.S. Army, where he was trained in counterintelligence, and he served during the Korean War in 1950. He earned his bachelor's and his MBA from UCLA, and then a PhD in education in 1970. In 1977, he became the first Japanese-American college president in the mainland United States. He served as president of Sacramento City College, Los Angeles Mission College, West LA College, LA Pierce College, and as interim superintendent and president of Imperial Valley College. He also served for 12 years as chairman of the Board of Trustees of the Institute of Buddhist Studies in Berkeley. He also, more locally, served as president of the Japanese Institute of Sawtell, the West LA Los Angeles Buddhist Temple, and the Japanese-American Historical Society. He was named the 2003 Nisei Week Pioneer. He also lectured Japanese students at Kagoshima Junshin College and Kashugou Shango University. He met his wife Grace while working at a gas station in the Sawtell area in West LA. They were married for over 60 years, and they have four children, Crystal, Randall, Jolie, and Maya. His book, Sawtell: West Los Angeles's Japan Town, features vintage images collected from local families and businesses and organizations, and provides rare glimpses into the Japanese immigrant experience in Los Angeles. For his dedicated work and for many accomplishments, Jack was bestowed the Order of the Rising Sun, one of Japan's highest honors. He was instrumental in working with the community a few years ago and with the city in installing Sawtell Japan Town, Sawtell Japan Town community signs to mark the community and give it an official designation a few years ago. There's no better tribute to a life well-lived than the enduring legacy that Jack leaves behind. I extend sympathies to his family, to his friends, to the Sawtell Japan Town community. He was a remarkable guy and a remarkable community leader, and he'll be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Any other adjourned motions, members? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned.